Stanford graduates Eli Risco and Ruth Robinson founded La Raza in 1967 as a platform for community organizers. It was sold by subscription, but free for those who couldn't afford it, and often found in local libraries. Raso says while we see the photographers' work, it was a collaborative effort to get the word out.
The photos over here show a number of photographers, but we had scores of other people that were involved that were actually doing the organizing.
One of the key issues of this movement was education. Back then, young Latinos weren't given many options. For example, women were encouraged to become homemakers instead of pursuing further studies.
You can be a home economics major, learn how to cook, learn how to serve plates and so forth, and if you want to work, you can be a secretarial class. So very few of us were geared to go to college, which is an academic curriculum.
But that was just one of the issues the Latino community faced, along with lack of employment, police brutality, and others. The exhibition's short-term goal, Raso says, is exposure, but long-term is to really educate the people, which can serve as a resource for educators and students. And his personal message to all of us, especially the youth?
60,000 Hispanics turn 18 every month, every month. Now they have a responsibility to vote. If they vote, we can change the whole system in the United States.
La Raza will be on display until February of 2019 at the Autry Museum. For dates and times, visit theautry.org. Traditions of the Far East come alive in the West, as Hollywood welcomes a new neighbor that highlights the beauty of Japanese culture.
Good choice.
Think of this Japanese robot that greets you near the door as a sort of international ambassador. Japan House has been open for eight months now, bringing a far eastern touch to the Tinseltown atmosphere at Hollywood and Highland.
I've always thought that Japanese culture is kind of more inherently creative than some, like seem to go about things in a different way and come up with really beautiful, classic ways of describing things and putting things together.
Visitors can get a dose of cultural immersion at the library and the salon for screenings and workshops. There's also a restaurant, a shop, and a hands-on, interactive gallery. This is a place that invites Angelinos to try all things Japanese.
We want people to experience Japan with the five senses: to see, to hear, to smell, to touch, and eat.
Japan House was created by the Japanese government, but it's received support from Councilmember Mitchell Farrell's office. So why L.A.?
Los Angeles is the city of diversity. It has the capacity to accommodate and enjoy different cultures.
According to Japan House and its president, the Japanese were among the first to start 3D printing. And look at these 3D-printed objects. This is an interactive exhibit, and when you touch the sensors, you actually get them to move. Pretty fun, right?
I think that anything that will help bring people into learning more about history is fantastic. And people love technology, they love robots, so if they can take that and then help them to learn about a culture, that's brilliant.
And while we're talking about robotics, the Japanese have an edge there, too.
Robotics is worldwide, right? But then the Japanese robotics has a long history, dating back to 400 years ago. It's a mechanized doll.
Who would have thought this mechanized doll would become the prototype for the modern-day robot? By the way, admission to Japan House is free.
L.A.'s home to one of three Japan House centers in the world, joining London and Sao Paulo. Well, Dodgers fever is running rampant this week, and we caught up with the L.A. Dodgers Foundation as they hit their goal of building 50 Dodger Dream Fields for L.A.'s young sluggers. The L.A. Dodgers Foundation and their fundraising teammates opened their newest youth ballpark for underserved kids.
It feels like an especially exciting game day for us as we celebrate the 50th Dodger Dream Field. Wow, congratulations.
Dodger skipper Dave Roberts cheering on the completion of the newest Dodgers Dream Field at Algen Sutton Rec Center in South Los Angeles. As promised, 50 youth stadiums have been built over the past 15 years. In fact, the very first Dream Field was also built at Sutton Rec Center. The charities of Dodger heroes Clayton Kershaw and Yasiel Puig pitched in to pay for the new one, a token of appreciation for hometown fans.
And we lost to this, to the kids, because the kids going to be the future for this community.
Dodgers legends Steve Garvey, Ron Say, Manny Moda, and Steve Yeager also here, mentioning the importance of more ballparks in inner-city neighborhoods.
Giving the kids something to do, keeping them out of trouble, giving them something that they can work together and accomplish something. So it's a beautiful thing.
Councilman Marquise Harris-Dawson represents the area.
Oftentimes, when you see our community on TV, it's not necessarily in a positive light. And so the fact that the people we watch every day on television, our local heroes, fought enough of us to not just show up today. They were here when we did the groundbreaking. They wrote a check, they brought their families, and they toss balls around with us. That means a lot to us.
I think that they show very good support about the field. They show very courageous thoughts with us. Let's get the World Series this year.
The L.A. Dodgers Foundation has a new goal: to build 25 more Dream Fields by 2033. That would make 75 Dream Fields to celebrate the 75th anniversary of the Dodgers' move to Los Angeles. The mayor kicks off a new effort to help young people find good-paying manufacturing jobs. A new project will make bus stops safer and more accessible in Hollywood, and plans get underway for a new equestrian trail and more recreational space at Lopez Canyon. All these stories in City B. Mayor Eric Garcetti kicked off a new drive to equip young Angelinos with the tools they need to secure good, middle-class manufacturing jobs, as part of a partnership between the city of L.A., manufacturing, and youth organizations. The mayor said young Angelinos from all backgrounds deserve to find their passion, discover their talents, and get good-paying jobs that put them on a path to the middle class, and that this partnership will give them the tools and training they need to put that opportunity within reach. Los Angeles City Councilmember Mitchell Farrell and the Bureau of Street Services broke ground on a $2.5 million project that will improve safety and access to transit stops along bustling commercial corridors in Hollywood. The project will improve accessibility at 14-area bus stops and install 43 new ADA-compliant curb ramps along Sunset Boulevard, Highland Avenue, and Vine Street. The project also includes new bus stop lighting, continental high-visibility crosswalks, and new trees. The project is expected to wrap up next summer.
The reality on the ground is that we're making the 13th district safer and more accessible for pedestrians, as evidenced by this new improvement.
Equestrians and hikers will soon have a new staging area and trail at Lopez Canyon. The city of L.A. broke ground on plans to develop a portion of buffer land surrounding the Lopez Canyon Environmental Learning Center for public recreational use. Plan to be developed on land owned by the city of L.A., the Lopez Canyon Equestrian Trail and Trailhead Project provides a recreational area consisting of a staging area and a one-and-a-half-mile two-way trail. The staging area will consist of approximately four acres of land, offering a picnic area, parking for vehicles and horse trailers, a water station for horses, as well as a bioswale, simple landscaping features to slow, collect, and infiltrate runoff from the site.
As the city of Los Angeles moves away from landfills and towards cleaner and greener solutions, projects like this will help improve the environment and the air we breathe.
Does Pac-Man, Donkey Kong, or Space Invaders bring back fond childhood memories? Well, they do for me. Union Station transported visitors back in time for the ultimate arcade rewind. For two days only, downtown's Union Station brought back some of your favorite arcade hits from the '70s, '80s, and '90s, and you didn't need quarters to play. The games were free. David Barrio brought his daughter.
Third generation tomorrow, the one I was telling you the phone. So I'm trying to introduce her to the old-school games.
No smartphone games at Metro's Retrocade Experience. Instead, it had 40 of the top button-mashing joystick-jamming hits from the golden age of gaming, with games like Mortal Kombat, Donkey Kong, and Pac-Man.
So she's getting a taste of what we grew up with.
It's great, because you've seen a lot of people here today, especially the parents, you know, people that are my age with younger kids, and they're just, they love to be able to share that joy, because, you know, I don't know how many arcades are still prevalent out there.
The folks at Metro hope events like Retrocade will score bonus points with visitors and help turn Union Station more into a destination, rather than just a place to pass through in between trains.
This is a place where parents can come and hang out with their kids and share something from their childhood.
Game over, but look out for more special events at Union Station coming soon. Union Station hosts many other special events like Retrocade, including film screenings, concerts, and art exhibits. Well, celebrate the 30th anniversary of the Autry Museum with Willie Nelson, come out for the Fall Festival at the Original Farmers Market, and head out to the L.A. Public Library for a very special celebration. All this and this week's things to do. To commemorate its founding in 1988 as a museum dedicated to telling the diverse stories of the American West, the Autry will hold its 30th anniversary celebration. The event honoring late museum founder Gene Autry will feature a private concert by Grammy Award-winning recording artist Willie Nelson. In addition to this special performance, festivities will include a cocktail reception, an elegant dinner, and dancing under the stars. Gene Autry will receive a very special tribute as founder of the museum. With its opening, Autry realized his dream to build a museum which would exhibit and interpret the heritage of the West and show how it influenced America and the world. The celebration takes place Saturday, October 13 at 6:00 p.m. at the Autry Museum, located at 4,700 Western Heritage Way. For more, visit theautry.org/celebrate. The Original Farmers Market's oldest and most beloved celebration, Fall Festival, which was established in 1934, returns, signaling the start of the fall harvest. Fall Festival is a family-friendly, weekend jam packed with crafts, games, live music, a petting zoo, and more. Fall Festival has its roots in the earliest days of L.A.'s favorite gathering place and the agricultural history of the city itself. The festival originally launched just a few months after the market first opened. Open to the public, the weekend is full of exciting activities for guests of all ages, and to really get the kids into the spirit of the season, Mr. Jack-o'-lantern's Game Zone will feature pumpkin bowling, candy corn hole, pumpkin decorating, pumpkin putting, and R.I.P. ring toss, and pumpkin knock. All the fun happens October 13 through the 14th, starting at 11:00 a.m. at the Original Farmers Market in L.A. Join the fun to celebrate the 25th anniversary of Central Library's grand reopening in 1993. Grab some swag, including a free commemorative enamel pin. Work on an art project or tour Central Library's special collections. View rare and unique items that the library has acquired since its founding. The fun takes place on October 13 from 11:00 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. at the Central Library. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kane from all of us here at L.A. This Week. Thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org and check out our newest social media videos, L.A. This Minute. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A.
This is Koreatown. My name is Hoang Be Kim. You watch L.A. City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Good morning. Good morning. Today is Wednesday, October 10. I want to welcome you to City Hall, to the Los Angeles City Council. Madam Clerk, we do have a quorum. Would you call a roll?
Blumenfeld Bonin, Buscaino, Sadio, Englander, Harris Dawson, Weezer, Coetz, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue Wesson. Ten members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Rodriguez moves. Martinez seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Price moves. O'Farrell seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, Items 1 through 3 are items noticed for public hearing.
Do you have cards on these items?
Yes, cards on all three items.
Then continue, please.
Items 4 through 20 are items for which public hearings have been held. There is a request to hold Item 5 on the desk for an amending motion.
Let's hold Item 5, Mr. Rue.
Please, 4 special.
Let's hold 4 as well. Let us prepare to vote on the remaining items. Mr. Clerk, if you would please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay, let's move on to the next set of items.
Item 21 is an item for which a public hearing has not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, that item is now before this body. Do you have cards?
Yes, there are cards on the item.
Then please continue.
Items 22 through 25 are items scheduled for closed session. Would you like to hold those on the desk?
Let me defer to our city attorney.
I think we can handle those in open session unless any member wants to go into close, Mr. President.
Okay, then, Madam Clerk, if you would run through the items, then we'll take a vote on them.
For Item 22, in the case entitled Linda Alstott versus the City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend $1,857,989.81 plus applicable interest in settlement of the matter. For Item 23, in the case entitled Mariposa Perez et al. versus the City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend $6 million in settlement of the matter. And on Item 24, in the case entitled Marco Millow versus the City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to reject the plaintiff's offer of settlement. And for Item 25, the city attorney will read the recommendations.
Thank you. And Item 25, Venice Justice Committee et al. v. City, there are three terms. First, plaintiff's attorneys will be awarded fees and costs in the amount of $80,000. Two, no vending or performing may occur in designated spaces between sunset and 9:00 a.m. And three, after sunset, First Amendment activities may take place in designated spaces. People engaged in First Amendment activities may, between sunset and midnight, use one table not larger than four by six feet, which must be removed when the person engaged in the First Amendment activity leaves, or at the latest by midnight.
Okay, thank you. Let's vote on these items. Please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, that brings us where?
Mr. President, that takes council back to presentations, items called special, or general public comment.
Okay, you know what? If we can pull up Mr. Herman on my screen. Okay, Mr. Herman, come forward. You have Items 1 through 3. And Item 21. Mr. Herman, come on if you're going to speak.
So we see we're paying out on these settlements. And of course, the public's concern is whether or not we could sustain ourselves...
Items 1 through 3, Mr.
Yeah, I'm dealing with lighting. And when there's light on the circumstance which prohibits public participation...
You're not on the subject, Mr. Herman, so please stay on the items. You have 1 through 3 and 21.
Item number 1, fucking protest against a fucking proposal for fucking improvement by white nigger maintenance off of San Fernando Road for the street fucking lighting in fucking accordance with fucking section 6.95 of the fucking Los Angeles Administrative. Now, if that's not clear, what the fuck am I talking about? That's protest. Now, on Item 2, another fucking protest dealing with NURI off of fucking Fernando Road in Penrose Street lighting. I used to drive that era. I actually worked off of that Sun Valley area, and it's really fucking dirty. For that reason, there are so many rats asking for more district lights in accordance with section 6.95, fucking 6.127 of the fucking Los Angeles Administrative Code, Proposition 666, under Proposition Code 218. Does that sound clear enough for you white motherfuckers? Am I on topic, Mr. City Attorney? Thank you. Now, on Item 3, another protest, fucking CD6, a fucking woman who calls herself a councilwoman shedding light on Sheldon Street lighting in accordance with section .6. Now, this ordinance intention is to adopt a rule, like we talked about Rule 77. Continue hearing on rules present order. Are you following along, monopoly boy? Because a monopoly man retired.
Stay on the topic, Mr. Herman. Just talk about the item.
So the issue again is whether or not my protest is relevant or irrelevant to the issues of concern. And since I sign up on all items, let me go back to the relative salary recommendations for Mr. Hagaskaskaskal of the Permanent Executive Director for Public Works Bureau. Fix our fucking infrastructure and put our fucking tax money to work and fix the potholes, asshole.
Let's give him his one minute of general public comment.
Now, ladies and gentlemen, in the LA Times, the article regarding rule decorum, you see, if we're able to pay out $1 million in settlement, as you heard earlier from the rookie attorney there, Mr. Fable, you see, the new litigation of liability is going to be on our protective speech and our right to participate in public buildings and engage with jackasses like the city attorney who rules decorum rules. Now, if I was such an asshole, as Sheila Q. will point out about our city attorney, I wouldn't have to stand here every day on every item debating whether my protest is protective speech, jackass. So get your shit together, Mr. Fable, and bring up Rule 77 once again so that we can amend whether or not protesting in decorum...
Thank you. Your time has expired. Your time's expired. Mr. Previn, Mr. Previn, please come forward. Mr. Previn, you have Items 1 through 3 and 21 in your general public comment. Welcome.
Thank you, sir. There's also 25 of those closed sessions, because you gave new information. You read the terms, so I'll give a little comment on that. I did sign up.
Mr. Previn, 1 through 3.
We could dispute it, sir, but that's the law.
Mr. Previn.
Okay, so there's an example of problematic...
Mr. Previn, no, Mr. Previn, speak on your items. Go ahead.
Okay. $80,000 to the attorneys is terrific.
Okay, we already voted on that item. It was handled in committee.
Okay, Mr. Previn, last warning. You want to speak on 1 through 3 and 21, then go right ahead. Anything else, we'll go straight to your public comment.
Well, I mean, I'm happy to speak about the lighting district. You know, there are two on the agenda in the section marked "I just noticed" for public hearing. two on the agenda in the section marked "I just noticed" for public hearing. There are only two in there. One is in CD2, which is my district. We looked at it closely. They approved it. I mean, I don't particularly, you know, disagree with putting up lighting districts. I do have some questions about the way they vote on it. But looking back at item 21, I believe you said, which is certainly something that you are allowing the public to speak on. Here we have Hagakalil, who, as you know, is the permanent executive director now of Public Works Bureau of Street Services. Now, Street Services is the very same group that didn't quite get out to Valley Vista Boulevard. And then, poor Peter Goldfroy, who Fabel has studied the case very carefully, fell into a pothole. And then, they got a bunch of attorneys, who you guys worked closely with, Fuhr takes donations from, who gave him $6.5 million. And this is a street that we never designated as safe for bicycles, ever. Now, they didn't look at it at SoCal Connected, but last night on SoCal Connected, they looked at how the newspapers are dying and nobody's covering the local politicians and how that ripens the situation for corruption. Now, you've got, I don't know, maybe 10,000 people outside from the union wearing the purple shirts, and you're pretending that they're not around.
So, Mr. Previn, this doesn't seem to be on items one to three or 21.
Well, I'm in the room, sir, and I am on the-- absolutely. Hagakil, Hagakil, Hagakalil, who I have respected for many years, he replaced the fellow who you got rid of when that last SoCal Connected came out, Mr. I forget his name, nice guy, accent, very sweet man. And he cares deeply about the streets of Los Angeles. But he wasn't able to order the equipment because Mayor Garcetti and the council president at the time refused to order the equipment to fix the potholes. So now, you've replaced him with the guy who everybody loves. Is he here today? Did he even make it today?
Right here.
Where is he? That's not Mr. Kalil. That's the son. Okay, fair enough. In any event, I think everybody loves everybody, sir. But you're not making it possible to speak on the relevant issues like Mr. O'Farrell bravely stood up to make it so that people who want to do business with City Hall have to disclose conflicts with the NRA. We're going to be sued for that.
You're not on any of the items--
One minute. One minute. One minute.
Let's go to my general public comment. Sir, nobody respects you more than me and Fabel. But, sir, 4215, here's a lawsuit because you're trying to block street vendors. O'Farrell came up with, they can put a First Amendment table. It only cost us $80,000. But I got some bad news, sir. The cost of your little rule change down here cost this city over $2.5 million. In Doc Meyer's nave took 1.4 to defend the city. You paid $600,000 to Rhodey. You paid $450,000 to Rhodey. You paid $250,000 to Hunt's attorney. Why, sir, are we continuing this way? People have information. They want to bring it to your attention so that Englander can talk to Bloomingfield quietly during it and Martinez can talk to O'Farrell quietly during these reports. And none of them know what's going on with a $6 million traffic accident again today. So is this the same as an affluent guy from Sherman Oaks falling off and he's right back at work at a lobbyist firm that handles Siclavia? Is this the same kind of $6 million settlement? Or is this someone in need who really got hurt? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a Miss Storm? Miss Storm? No Miss Storm. So that ends Madam Clerk and City Attorney multiple. No, no, I'm not. That's multi-comment. I'm going into general public comment. I'd like to bring up Mr. Schoonover. And I'd like to ask you, Bob, do you have some other people? I'd like to take care of your group at one time. Or is it just you? Okay, so we'll--
So, good morning, council members, council president. You know, I was really hoping at this point in time I wouldn't be here. I was hoping we had already done a ratification vote on the contract that expired the last day of June. As you all remember, or most of you remember, you were here, you know, during the Great Recession, the Coalition of Unions cooperated with the city, saved lots of money. Last year, last time in bargaining, 18 months past the expiration date. That's a recovery contract. Okay. Now, we're here in a brand-new economy. It's not a recovery. Things are going well. Revenue is up. We don't want to talk about takeaways. We don't deserve takeaways. We deserve a good, fair contract right now. There's no reason it doesn't happen right now. So please, there's a lot of people out there on the street.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Schoonover. Miss, please, right here in the second row. Yes. If you'd come up and identify yourself.
Good morning, Lucille Saunders.
Yes, got you.
Great. The La Brea Willoughby Coalition takes a stand to speak up and to raise the issues and fights for rights and codes Zev Yaroslavsky produced to protect our neighborhood and now continue, we must continue through legal routes. The facts and legal foundations demonstrates that the city continued non-compliance, non-enforcement, and misrepresented its own laws, aligned with non-elected, politically-appointed bodies rather than the law, ignored, not reviewed extensive local neighbors, and neighborhood councils' opposition documentations and presentation, and discards the escalating predictable negative impacts of this decision-making, this president's decision-making to neighborhoods and to the city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I could have Lamont White and Ellen Evans. Lamont White, Miss Evans, if you'd come forward.
Hello, good morning. My name is Ellen Evans. I represent the Doheny Sunset Plaza Neighborhood Association, which represents 2,000 homes in the hills. I originally came to show support on weed whackers, but I also want to make you aware of a situation. We were so happy when you passed the hillside construction regulation earlier this year. The reduction in work hours made a material difference to our residents, particularly the ban on Saturday construction. And so, this had been enforced in our area for some months and in areas of CD5 for more than a year. And then, last week, there was a new interpretation that said that the hours provision couldn't apply to projects that had already been vested. And I'd like you to send that back to the city attorney for review, please. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, that ends, I believe, general public comment. Let's vote on items one through three. One through three. Please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Now, let's vote on item 21. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize Mr. Englander for presentation.
Unbelievable. Mr. President, colleagues, this is one you're going to want to hear. And I'm going to ask if Herman makes another noise, Mr. President. If you can have him removed. He's just squeaking and squawking over here, interrupting this presentation.
Last warning, Mr. Herman.
Thank you. Colleagues, you know, we often stand up here and recognize people that we call heroes in our city of Los Angeles, people who go over and above and beyond what it means to be a human being, a humanitarian. Talking about Herman, Mr. President, please.
Mr. Herman, please be quiet. All right--
This is too important.
Yes, it is.
So we've had police officers and firefighters, faith-based organizations, you name it, that we've recognized in these council chambers, and we've called them heroes. And they are. But we have found an individual who goes beyond that word, somebody who has done the extraordinary and doesn't wear a uniform, doesn't wear a badge, and isn't paid to do it. Today, we're here to celebrate Marine Corps veteran Wendell Blasingame. Wendell was raised by a loving mom who pushed him to always get straight A's and go to church on Sundays. He graduated from San Jose State, held a well-paying job as a successful electrician, and he raised a family, the American dream. Today, he can be found at sitting under an oversized umbrella in San Julian Park here downtown. The park is right at the epicenter of Skid Row. And he continues every single day to do what he does best. He tells people where to find showers, clothing, and food. He gets them temporary or permanent housing. He helps replace a lost identification card. He even helps them draft resumes to get jobs. Wendell has helped people using his own credit card and money. He cosigns rentals for complete strangers to move into apartments. He does fundraising on his own to cover security deposits to get them started. Even accompanied people on the bus, went with them on the bus, just to sit next to them, give them an ear and a shoulder, and be support. He helps dozens of people every single day. In fact, he knows everything from schedules of shuttles going to the shelters, to references of mental health and addiction care, to spots for a shower or a cheap bite to eat, all at the top and on the top of his head. He even knows every single affordable housing resource in the entire city of Los Angeles. On his own, he's placed over 200 people into housing. He's done this. He's done-- That deserves a round of applause. By the way, by the way, that was with an asterix. He's done this for the past 17 years and hasn't missed a single day. Now--
Bless you.
That 200, the 200 that he placed in the housing, that was this year alone. This guy is a saint. He's not with an agency. He's not with an organization. He's not getting paid except for the smiles, and that he knows he's helping those and that he's touched somebody's life. The homeless community and the issues they constantly face hit close to home for him. After the death of his beloved wife, he fell into a fog of fear, then doubt, apathy, and he became what many are today, an addict, addicted to alcohol. Months later, two of his fingers were severed when he fell off a building while working as an electrician. The combination--
Okay, wait, 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 wait. We're in the middle of a presentation. You're disrupting the meeting. Would you allow us to finish the presentation? Hey, guys, this is totally, this is totally a disruption, and you're disrespecting a person that's being honored. Look, sit down and be quiet, please. No, I mean, hey, 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 guys, we are honoring a person. You don't have to show respect for-- wait, you don't have to show respect for me, but show respect for this gentleman that's being honored.
Let me tell you right now--
You're welcome. But let, I mean, this is a phenomenal man. Let us give him what he deserves.
Let me--
So go ahead, Mr.--
I think their timing was right because they're marching and coming in saying, "Fix L.A." And we're honoring a guy that's doing just that, one body at a time, one soul at a time. He's picking people up off the streets who are down and out on their luck, who have seen the hardest times of their life, and he's fixing L.A. one person at a time, every single day, on his own, for no pay, as the hero in our community. And I appreciate it because that's who we're honoring here today. So let me finish his story real quick. Give me a moment. Let me finish his story real quick. You guys will have your chance. So after the death of Wendell's wife, he fell into a fog of fear. He became an alcoholic, and he fell off a roof as an electrician, losing his job and his fingers. The combination of both incidents caused his life to spiral out of control, as we can all imagine. He began living on the streets, and after two years, he had a wake-up call that literally changed his life and hundreds and hundreds of lives from that day forward. He sobered up on his own. He picked himself up by the bootstraps. And then, he chose to help those in need. Wendell has since been dubbed the saint of Skid Row. He's a guiding force and an inspiration to all of us. Outside of helping those in need, Wendell sits on the downtown L.A. Neighborhood Council. He also hosts job fairs, movie screenings at the James Wood Community Center, and he's truly an angel in the city of Los Angeles amongst local heroes. He's here today to speak. He brought a couple of friends to speak. But I will ask you that we rise, that we rise and applaud Wendell, a true Angeleno, a local L.A. hero, a saint here in Los Angeles. He smells good, too.
Mr. Englander, before Wendell speaks, I want to recognize Mr. Weezer and then Mr. Price. So, Mr. Weezer?
Thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Englander, for bringing Wendell here to get the recognition from this city council and the city. Your work, Wendell, has not gone unnoticed. You have impacted thousands of lives, as Mr. Englander mentioned, and as he underlined, is that you've done it without really belonging to any organization or doing it for pay. You've been volunteering, and that's what makes this even more impressive, that it's your big heart why you have accomplished so much for other human beings. And not only do you, like, do the basics to help others, get them food, get them shelter, but working through D-LAN, you were able to provide a very successful job fair program. And that's what a lot of people are looking for. They're looking for opportunity. And you put together all the resources, brought it to Skid Row, something that we had never seen before. And it showed that a lot of people are willing to go to work if given that opportunity. So Wendell, you've done a tremendous job. This honor here today, we want to not only acknowledge you, but we're acknowledging at the same time those thousands of people that you've saved from the streets. Congratulations, brother. We love you.
Mr. Price.
Mr. Blasingame, I too just want to say thank you. You really are an inspiration to us all, stepping up, doing whatever has to be done. The fact that you go into your pocket to do it, that you do case management with the folks on the bus, on the streets, wherever it's needed, that just demonstrates how important you are and how important involvement is. So thank you for all you're doing. Thank you for your commitment to our community, and thank you for making us all better for your efforts. Thank you.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Englander, for bringing this wonderful presentation. And, you know, we have so many unsung heroes, and to recognize you for your contribution is not enough, sir. It's really incredible, the example that you've set for so many people, oftentimes feeling like the challenges related to homelessness is insurmountable, that it's so much larger than we're able to handle. And the incremental progress that you've helped to deliver is the example of the selflessness that so many people can actually exemplify every single day, working with us. But even through your service independently, what you've managed to accomplish is really remarkable. So I just wanted to rise and say thank you so much for your selflessness, for your humanitarianism, for you exemplifying what each of us can do every single day to help make an indelible mark in this terrible circumstance that we're experiencing right now, to help lift families out of poverty, to help get them into the services that they need. Sir, I thank you so much for your selflessness and your-- Sir, I thank you so much for your selflessness and your service in the city of Los Angeles. Thank you so much.
Wendell, we want to just really thank you for being a good human being, being a good guy, and there's nothing wrong with being a good guy, and you definitely demonstrate that. So God bless you. Thank you for all of the work that you've done. And, Mr. Englander, why don't we hear from Wendell?
Before we hear from him, we've got a couple of friends who wanted to say a few words who came here as well. Patty Berman from the Downtown L.A. Neighborhood Council, she's the president, and Julie Harris, a longtime friend. And then I also, I also want to put this out there, if there are any writers, producers out there listening to this, they need to tell Wendell's story and make a movie about this saint. So I'm urging them to do that as well, but without further ado, Patty.
Welcome.
Thank you. Council members, I know you usually see me when I've got a complaint. Today, I have nothing to complain about. This man, I've known him now for about 13 years, since I've been working with the Neighborhood Council. He's not just an asset to what we do, he's a leader. You've already heard about everything that he does in Skid Row every day. In addition to that, he works with the Neighborhood Council, represents that area there, makes sure that we take care of things that need to be done in that area, and as Mr. Weezer has stated, he actually, single-handedly pulled us together to do a job fair in the middle of Skid Row last year, where people up above 100 people were offered jobs that one day. This is the kind of work that this man does. But he's more than that. He's a good friend, he's a good man, he cares about the people he knows. He has been a constant, constant support to me, not just in the work that we do here in downtown. I adopted a child off of Skid Row, he's helped me with that. He understood some of the issues that I was dealing with, helped me get through it. I don't think anyone could ever have been a better friend to me than this man has been. And in his spare time, he does all the rest of it. So I don't know how you could honor anyone more important than Wendell Blasingame. I think, I think that what you are doing here today just barely scratches the surface. This man is indeed a saint, and I am so, so honored to call him my friend.
Please, please come forward. You?
Good morning. My name is Julie Harris, and I'm here just to honor Mr. Wendell. I'm not in church, but I want to say first, just giving honor to him and to all of you, the councils, all of you. It's just an honor to be here, too. I lived downtown for like four years. I've met Mr. Wendell four years from today. I worked as a bud volunteering at the rescue mission. After my job was over there, Mr. Wendell took me under his wings. I knew that I was getting ready to go somewhere and do some good things then, other than the things that I was already doing. There's so many things I could say, I'd be here all day, but I've been working with him with the job fair. I've watched him work, I've watched him talk to people. He doesn't turn anyone down, nobody down. Doesn't matter if you're coming clean, dirty, drunk, sober, on drugs, you're allowed to come and sit at his table, and he will talk to you and give you advice and help you and lead you on the right way. And I just thank him, and I just ask God to continue to bless him from head to toe as he carry out his work through the homeless of downtown Los Angeles. Thank all of you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming down.
So without further ado, the man, Mr. Wendell.
All right. Welcome, and thank you again for your service.
I truly want to thank each and every one of you, but most of all, I want to thank the man above for giving me the strength and the vision and the dream. I graduated out of high school, I never thought about dealing with homeless or being homeless. And as we face today, people are going through the struggle right now. I didn't know the calling on individual lives that I've been touched and will touch in the future, but I do know that each and every one of us is unique, each and every one of us is one of a kind, one of the made. How you know that? Because of your fingerprints? But most of all, you are cared by me. And my concern is every day, and no matter how, there's no feelings involved, I get up in every day motivated and stimulated to be able to help somebody. If you shake your own tree, you'll find that someone in your family structure is homeless. Send them to me. I strongly believe that, I didn't understand last night, a toss and turn, that the city of Los Angeles was recognizing something that I truly love, is helping and making sure that someone's secure, because somebody's sister, brother, cousin, uncle, family member is displaced out there on the streets without any positive re-encouragement at the same time, no shelter around them. This is what I do in the heart of Skid Row. I tell you this before I get off the mic, is that no is not an option. We must, if we call ourselves, and I love L.A., I'm telling from the bottom of my heart, Angelison, we, if you are a citizen in the state of California, you need to stand up and be accountable and say that we're going to do something with this homelessness. I don't know what the results are. All I know is that I'm doing my part, and I'm giving it 110% every day of my life that, and to try to get someone off the street. If you take the time out and find out that there are many avenues that could be used to get these people off the streets, because if not, you'll have half the city homeless. And that's something we just, we don't probe. But I want to say to you, thank you very, very much for the recognition that I never thought, and I didn't understand it last night, but now I'm slowly comprehending that somebody is watching, somebody is taking consideration and observing what I do with love and enjoyment. I, I'm not, no money can place on an individual's life. They need hope, they need encouragement, they need motivation, but most of all, the easiest thing is, is recognition and respect. I strongly give that every day, and I wish that each human being in the state of California start recognizing and start respecting the homeless, no matter what their condition is. They are human beings, and they are special. And so we, I would like to say thank you very, very much, and I don't mean that private, to be recognized for what I do. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendell. Thank you. So on behalf, thank you and bless you.
It's why we're all here. It's why we're all fighting for our families and our communities. For those in need, it's people like Wendell, fights it every day. So on behalf of all of us, Wendell, signed by every single council member, the mayor of Los Angeles, we want to congratulate you, we want to thank you. I love you, we love you. Keep doing what you're doing and making a difference every single day. We got your back. Thank you, Wendell.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
We're going to go in the back, too. We'll go, we'll take you in the back.
Okay, Mr. Corretts? I think item four, is it?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think as we all know, fire season now is pretty much year-round due to climate change, and so we're starting to see more fires, especially in the last year, in the hillsides in Los Angeles. And so we have implemented some very common sense measures, like changing the weed, brush clearance equipment and weed whackers so that we don't use metal, and requiring that something be available, at least fire extinguishers nearby, to put out a fire that might be started by a weed whacker. So to prevent people who are trying to do the right thing and clearing their property from actually themselves or people that they hire actually starting a fire, like the Portola Fire recently, which fortunately didn't cause great harm or property loss, but consumed some acreage, could have been a lot worse, except for the quick work of our fire department. So we are trying to take this step to prevent ourselves from unnecessarily causing brush fires in the hillsides. And we appreciate Chief Tarazus and his staff for working closely with us to come up with the best practices so that we keep our hillsides safe during our somewhat endless fire season. And I appreciate Councilmember Rue working with me on this and partnering. Together, we represent much of the central hillside area in the city of Los Angeles. So colleagues, I hope you will join us in taking this step, and I ask for an aye vote.
Thank you, Mr. Rue.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Corretts. And colleagues, I do want to join Mr. Corretts and stress how important these new brush clearance requirements are. No one on this council needs reminding about the risk of brush fires in Los Angeles. Whether it's the Portola Fire this summer, the Skirball Fire last winter, or the Latuna Fire last year, the increasing risk of brush fire is an increasing danger for all of us. Fire season is now a year-round reality. Between July and September of this year, LAFD responded to three fires in Griffith Park alone, one which required the evacuation of more than 2,000 people from the observatory. This is a danger in the valley, in our parks, and throughout our hillsides. These fires can start anywhere, anytime, and with one spark. We need brush clearance requirements to be improved and enforced. So I greatly appreciate the work of the Los Angeles Fire Department and Councilmember Corretts on this, and it is my hope that we can get this ordinance approved and in place as soon as possible. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. Let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, now go to item five. Let's do...
And, Mr. President, item number five, yes, an amending motion has been posted and circulated for council's consideration.
All right, so let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, now, we got some additional guests. We had already closed a general public comment, but I want to reopen it for a bit, but before I call on you, is Pearson? Okay, we're going to let, let you speak, and then I'm going to call up representatives from the coalition. Yes?
Thank you to the council members evidently. We've had your support in the hillsides and really appreciate the work in the Public Works Committee by councilpeople Rodriguez and Martinez. We know how difficult it is for women to be heard, and we appreciate, in the particular the Mulholland Corridor, where we are still the title to the landowners, but we are held to a 200-foot perpetual easement to maintain this area up to the standards of any other major thoroughfare that the government takes control of. It's important to us that our firemen are not endangered by unnecessary fires. It makes no sense to use an instrument such as a weed whacker to cut down trees when it's not the proper tool. I know, I do my own hillside clearance for 23 years. I appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Herman, sit down. We're getting ready to, you have some people that have something very important to say. We let you speak, everybody listen to you. You're going to show them respect and listen to them. So I want to start out with Gilda Valdez, Simbo Wright, and Carmen Walker. Welcome.
How you doing? Thank you for having us here. So I, I know that Bob Schoonover was here earlier.
Yeah, 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 you need to be here. Let us...
So I know that Bob Schoonover came in earlier already, okay? Launa's in the house, the Teamsters in the house, Afsmi's in the house, Local 7 to 1 is in the house. Our contract expired June 30th. This is very simple. Our workers cannot afford to get the healthcare cost passed on to them. We just settled with L.A. County for over 60,000 workers for our fully-paid healthcare for the next three years guaranteed. The city can do better. We want Mayor Garcetti to do well as he goes off to his endeavors, but he has to fix L.A. first. Bottom line is that this is not going to stop, it's only going to escalate. We need all of you guys to get involved. This is all of our city. We're in this together. We need you guys to jump in here and help settle this contract. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wright? Okay, guys, we got, we got to keep it down. We want to hear, we got, we want to hear from the speakers. Go right ahead.
This is going to be short and simple. If we have to pay for healthcare, we will have to go for public assistance with L.A. County or whatever county we live in. We would have to go for, we don't make good money like a lot of people in front of us, and we respect your salaries, you deserve it. But we deserve to have healthcare where we can afford to live in Los Angeles and serve the people of Los Angeles. We should not have to pay for something that the city preaches that it should be given to the rest of the nation. Our mayor preaches that. So we're asking you guys to totally support us. We've been bargaining for a long time, months, and we're still at the same thing. So we're asking you guys to think about not just the faces that you see here, but we have children and families. That's, that's who you're affecting. Thank you.
Thank you, Simbo. Ms. Walker? Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon. So we just did a march around outside of City Hall here. There were hundreds of city workers out there that had a lot to say to you. While I was marching around, I did come up with a little something for you to think about because this is what was in my heart. Mr. Mayor, come back to work. Show us what L.A. is worth. Before you get one more vote, you still need to fill the city with hope. Middle-class jobs is what L.A. deserves. L.A. city workers are proud to serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for giving us this time. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Okay, Madam Clerk, that brings us away. Guys, no. We're going to, you're disrupting, we're going to have to ask you to leave. So, Mr. City Attorney, we... In fact, let us recess for a second, but they are disrupting the meeting, but they are exiting the meeting as well. Okay, let's return to session. So my question to the clerk is what business is before this body?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
They are posted, they are referred. Announcements, members, any announcements? No announcements? Could we all please rise for adjourned motion? I'm looking to my left, Mr. Weezer's side, my left. We're rising, Mr. Weezer, for adjourned. I don't see any adjourned motions to my left. I'm looking to my right. I don't see any adjourned motions to the right. Members, this meeting is adjourned.